Good evening, folks. First off, my wife told me to apologize to you guys for my attire this evening. I'm wearing some equipment that I'm hiding. Anyway, thank you for coming. The meeting will come to order at 7:03 November 19th, 2024. Madam Town Clerk, is there a quorum?
There is, Mr. Moderator.
With the quorum being present, we will begin our special town meeting of today, November 19th, 2024. Heather, may I please have the warrant? The return of the warrant shows that it was properly served by a constable of Westbrookfield on October 31st, 2024. Chief Lapierre, would you be so kind as to point out fire exits, et cetera?
Certainly. My apologies, ladies and gentlemen. I'm just getting over a little bit of pneumonia. It's bronchitis, but I'll do my best not to cough and hack. In any event, some of you may remember that there used to be a fire exit in this little room over here. That is no longer. So if we had an issue, please don't head into that little room. That is no longer an exit. However, there is one back here at the loading dock, and of course, where everybody entered the building, all the fire exit signs do work, so we're appreciative of that. Also, for the simple fact that if we have some kind of an EMS incident and if there's an AED that is required, three quarters of the way up the hallway on the left-hand side, there is an AED mounted on the wall, and then we're good.
Thank you, Chief. And just as, would you be so kind, please, as to turn your cell phones off or put them on vibrator or something, please? And this time, I left mine outside, so mine won't go off. Anyway, if we might stand and salute the flag, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And a brief moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. And at this time, I would like to introduce our town clerk, Heather Goff, our Board of Selectmen Chair Roland Sikklenberger, Eric Von Blaken, Brad Merkel, and the Assistant to the Board Betty Gobey. The chair is now Mr. Von Blaken. Sorry about that. I did not know you reorganized. Our advisory board is chaired by Laurie Loughlin. We have Don Moberg. We have Michael Olet. Odette, I'm sorry. And Secretary Melinda Zubin. I didn't see her sitting there. I'm sorry. That's Kami Lamika, Vice Chair. And as usual, tonight's objective is going to be to be fair in our deliberations, efficient and effective in our actions. Before we proceed, I move that the following be allowed to sit with the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Nathan Haglund and Chris Petrini. And I move that we allow the following non-residents to speak. Donna Allard, our town accountant, Beth Gobey, Executive Assistant, Lieutenant Ken Collette from the Fire Department. And I believe that's all that's on the list. So with that, just a few rules that have not changed. There is no time limit according to our bylaws. If you wish to speak, please rise, and I will recognize you. Please begin by stating your name. And because we don't have a time limit, I would just suggest that you try to keep any conversation down to around three minutes in consideration of other people that may want to speak. And I like where this one came from, from an old document. The people have a right, in an orderly and peaceful manner, to assemble and to consult upon the common good in instruction to their representatives. And lastly, motions that you might want to make shall be in written form. Please include your name. And with that, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Von Blaken, would like to say a few words.
Good evening. Last time we met, I spent a portion of your time trying to give you an overview of the many accomplishments here in town, largely attributed to our skilled, dedicated hires. However, I did not spend much of any time talking about what we lost. It is important that I do so now. We have lost our town administrator, Ron Ron Sanangelo, to retirement. We have lost several police officers to other towns and municipalities. We have lost our Highway Department Secretary Tammy, and we are losing our town clerk, Heather, and there is a constant concern about who might next consider leaving for better pay. In addition to the losses of personnel, and one of the more important, most important reasons we are here, is the loss of our last functioning pumper fire truck. Of course, when these losses happen in a town, there's plenty of finger pointing, but the common thread is simple: money. That is why we are here. We want to spend our money wisely, and you have a voice in that. Now, I'm sure that you are all aware of the cliche penny wise, pound foolish. If you are like me at some point in your life, you have bought a cheap car or truck and then spent thousands of dollars year after year trying to repair it. Many of us have been forced to do that because we couldn't possibly afford a new car. That's pretty much where we are. As one of your elected officials, it has been extremely frustrating, for example, to watch many skilled town staff leave us for other towns that pay at levels more in line with going rates. Often, when a staffer quits, we must quickly hire someone to fill in temporarily at a much higher rate. Furthermore, interim and new hires rarely hit the ground running. Hours must be spent learning to navigate the new job. In the interest of saving money in the short run, it is too often lost in trying to keep these jobs at a lower rate. That is a loss for the town, and it is penny wise and pound foolish. On the floor today, we have an extremely important article for your consideration. The purchase of a new fire truck. Fire Chief Rich Lapierre will talk more intelligently about that than I ever could, so I'll shut up about that and let him explain it when the time comes. Thank you for your attention, and please, please, consider your vote tonight carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Article 1. I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $12,750 to supplement appropriations previously voted under Article 4 of the annual town meeting of June 4, 2024, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, for line items in the budgets of various town departments as follows. In his only one, electrical inspector, personal services. The adjustment to the line 4 item, which was $5,274, the adjustment is $12,750 for a revised budget of $18,024. And this is a majority vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Do we have questions?
That would be probably a good idea, huh? My bad, sorry. Let's discuss it. Pam?
Do we need a motion to undo the vote?
Huh?
Don't we need a motion to undo the vote?
Yes. You want to do that? There is a motion to undo my mistake of voting? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Pam?
Scavera 267 West Main. I just want to know, the electrical inspector for $12,000? That's it? Is there an explanation? That's all? I'm just looking for...
Is he electric?
Getting it closer? Okay. So this was actually on our special town meeting in June. We collected revenues for the solar panel permit fees that after the work is done, our electrical inspector inspects the work and gets paid based on that. That was supposed to occur by the end of June, which would have been last fiscal year. The work was not done by the solar company in time, so the electrical inspector could not inspect it in time, so it fell to this fiscal year now. The revenues have already been collected into our accounts, and now it's time to pay the electrical inspector for the work he's done on those solar panel inspections. And this is what will allow him to be paid. Part of it will be now as a partial payment, and then in the spring, when he finishes the rest of the inspections, when the work is done by the solar company, he will get paid the balance of it. So that's what the additional $12,750 is.
Is there any other discussion?
So my name is Gail Kamara Marks, and I think that that explanation would have been nice to know upfront. And I'm concerned because there are no dollar amounts, and I would like an explanation following as we go through this.
Very good. Is there any other discussion? There being none, we'll go to the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. The article passes. Article 2, which is also a majority vote, is to transfer some money from the stabilization fund, and I move that the town transfer the sum of $45,750 previously voted on the Article 6 of the June 6th, 2023 special town meeting, the Fire Apparatus Stabilization Fund. Is there any discussion? Or Rich, you want to?
David Brown, 27 Rodman, Chairman of the Capital Planning Committee. I think we need to have some context for this that the Fire Department can provide before we vote on these three independent but closely related. All three of these need to pass to do what we want to do tonight, so let's make sure that the folks in the room understand what each of these is and how it applies. And I'll be back to talk more.
Thank you, sir. Rich?
Okay. Little description about Article number 2. What Article 2 was, if you remember at the last town meeting, we voted to put $47,750 out of the $45,750 out of the Fire Department Fire Truck Stabilization account. We put it into an account because I had written a grant. Now, if we would have got awarded that grant by the federal government, we would have had to match that grant with 5% from the community. That's all that money is. That money has been sitting there for years in a fire truck stabilization replacement account, and all we did was take that money, put it into an account just in case we got awarded the grant. That's all. It was never any money that you could tax on this past year or the year before. Actually, we haven't put money into that account in years. So all we're looking to do now is take that $45,750 and move it back into the stabilization account. That's all it is. And ultimately, when we get to the next question, Article number 3, with that money being put back into the stabilization account, that will allow us to borrow money towards the fire truck, if you so allow, is what that's for. Okay? So we're just taking money that we took out of the account last year, and we're just putting it back into the account. That's all we're doing with Article number 2.
Thank you, Rich. Is there any other discussion? There being none, we'll go to the vote. All in favor of Article 2, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the article has passed. Article 3. I move that the town transfer the sum of $162,000 from the Fire Apparatus Stabilization Fund to provide partial funding for the purchase of a new engine pumper truck. Is there any discussion? After the discussion. I'm sorry, sir. Could you stand, please? Well, Article 1 encompasses various town departments, so that's a kind of a wide scope. Well, they did. They talked about the electrical inspector. It's a town department, so it encompasses the scope of the article. The other thing that was on the warrant was an explanation, and that was to increase for a town administrator, and that was withdrawn. Well, it's an explanation. So the article was presented by the Board of Selectmen for the electrical inspector.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Things change often as we move towards town meeting. Needs change, circumstances change. So we discussed that we could meet... My apologies. We realize that we can meet the salary requirements that we are looking for for the replacement town administrator without having to ask for any additional funds this year. That's why the article, that's why that motion was removed.
Could people go to the mic if they're going to speak?
This is really not relevant. I'll give you one minute.
Hey, Cass, man, 40 Lake Street. All right, so what did you bump the salary up to?
Well, we're, the salary, we're just...
We did.
Nothing's been decided yet. We haven't hired a replacement town administrator. We're looking at a salary of around $100,000. Wait.
Okay, go ahead.
To answer the question, sir. We're looking at a salary of around $100,000 a year for the replacement town administrator.
All right.
The reason, the reason that it was withdrawn is that there's a strong feeling that when it appears on the annual town meeting, there will be a hold, and we'll be going through this whole thing again.
Okay, so what are you basing this on?
Information from the Collins Center.
Okay. So if you're basing that on the Collins, what other departments?
Sir, we don't have the money. This town rejected our proposition.
Where did you find the money for him?
We'll be deficit spending again.
Who's that money coming from? Table it.
There's nothing to table, sir.
Mark, the article was just on the electrician. Is there more discussion about the fire truck and the request for $162,000?
Yes. Tell me about the fire truck. The fire truck we're considering buying, how much does it cost, and how much of that are we going to borrow?
Okay.
Rich?
Absolutely. So we have a little bit of a slide presentation that's going to explain most of that, but as far as Article number 3 goes, we just agreed to transfer that $45,750 back. So that puts that account up to about $178,000, I believe. I don't have the math in front of me, but in any event, what we're going to, and I'll show you in the slide presentation on the next article, well, the start of the next article, we're going to borrow $162,000 out of that account to put towards the purchase of a truck. And what we're going to do is leave about $16,000 in that account, because quite honestly, I'm still going to write grants to try and replace some of the older old equipment that we have, and we need a little bit of money to match it so the town doesn't, the town doesn't have to eat the whole cost of it. You understand what I mean? So there's still going to remain about $16,000 left in that fire truck stabilization account, and we're going to borrow the other $162,000 to purchase the truck. Okay? And I'll show that when we get to the next article.
I think you've got it backwards.
I got it backwards? We're borrowing 510, but we're taking 162 out of stabilization. Right. My apologies. Thanks for the correction.
Is there any other discussion on this? Yes, sir. Could you come to the microphone, please?
Oh, I'm good. That's okay. Jesse Marion, 240 Braintree Road. Just wondering, at 510, what does that do to our tax basis? And can you give us a little bit more info on the other truck that's broken? Can we fix that instead?
So that's actually in the presentation. Do you, if you, if folks are so inclined, if you want, we could do the presentation now. I think it would be best, and that would answer a lot of questions. Okay?
Yeah.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Moderator?
Yeah, we, is your presentation part of Article 3?
It'll, exactly right. It'll set up 3 and 4.
3 and 4?
Yes. Everybody see that okay? It's, it's not perfect, slightly on the fuzzy side, but it's my low-budget projector. Doesn't belong to the town, actually. So right now, you're looking at, the truck on the left is Engine 1. Engine 1's a 1993. It's served the town for, since 1993. That's the last truck, structural fire truck that the town bought back in 1993. That's the one that's got the engine issue. Now, and I'll get to what Jesse asked a few minutes ago about can it be repaired. So Engine 3, the one on the right that you're looking at, is the one that we purchased two years ago from the town of Brentfield. So far, knock on wood, that truck has been serving us well, and it's our only frontline structural truck that we have left. Okay? Oh, you were doing this for me. Okay, thanks. So right now, if you drive by the Highway Department, you look down there, and you see that old green tanker that's down there and our old Engine 2, the engine, the tanker went out of service a couple of years ago for bad axles in the rear end, which we found out is, it's probable for that kind of a vehicle. And Engine 2 is out, it went out of service because they wouldn't inspect it any longer because of the rot in the frame, et cetera, et cetera, would pass inspection, amongst other issues. Rescue 1 has pump issues. It's sitting in the station. We still use it. We just don't pump all the water with it. We use it for mainly utility stuff. We use it for rescue purposes. We use it for tech rescue stuff. We use it for a lot of other items. Emergency management uses it on different calls for rehab and things alike, but we're still using that truck. We just don't pump water. Engine 1, that's, that's the issue that we're having right now with a problem in the engine. Now, the problem with the engine that we have is we can't get a mechanic, a certified mechanic, that will give it their blessing. They're saying the truck's too old. They don't want to put their blessing on it, and quite honestly, it's 31 years old. How much money are we going to keep putting into this truck? It's nickeling and diming us at this point. It's just, it's just adding up and adding up. So it's at the point, being 31 years old, instead of dumping good money into this, it's time to probably send it down the road. So right now, we've been, we've been taking the stuff, the trucks that were broke down, we've taken all the components that are on those trucks, and we've moved them to other trucks. What I mean by components is the firefighting equipment that we use day to day. We've taken that, and we've, we've kind of moved it to trucks that will help us best serve the community. So some of the stuff that was on those trucks that we maybe used once a year or every other year, we took those, some of that stuff off, and we made room for, like, we had to move the Jaws over. We actually have a battery-powered set of Jaws now, which we didn't have years ago. We had to find a compartment for that, so that's actually on our Engine 4, which is a brush truck. But we still use it for, it gets used for everything now. But there's a lot of stuff that we've done to just try and get us through this hiccup process that we're in right now with the lack of, with the lack of apparatus. So if anybody remembers back, September 10th, we had a fire up at Gabit Wire, not Gabit Wire, Cork Wire, up on East Main Street, and when we got there, I was the first one there, first Fire Department member there, and we had fire coming out of the roof. Well, what was a small structure on the top of the roof that has, where there's a draw tower that sticks out, and there was fire just blowing out of that thing when we got there. So Engine 3, which is that one we bought a couple of years ago, that used truck we bought from Brentfield, was the first truck there, and our second truck there, unfortunately, was the only truck we had service, was a brush truck, which is, it's a, it's a pretty nice brush truck. It's got 800 gallons of water on it, but it's not designed for structural firefighting. It doesn't have, it's got a small ladder. I think it's like maybe 14 or 16 feet or something like that, but it's not designed to be used, what we're using it for, but we don't have any choice. Luckily, we've made our mutual aid agreement with our neighboring communities pretty robust, so now, in the event that we get a fire, those guys are on their way as soon as I hear that the fires come in. I'm usually calling for them right off the bat to help us get through the times that we're dealing through right now. However, with that being said, a lot of those communities are going through similar issues. Maybe not so much with fire apparatus, but they're having those issues with staffing. They're having those issues with, especially during the day, you can't get folks, and they even, they even have brand-new trucks that are breaking down that are spending time in the shop. So we're all kind of in the same boat. We're sharing and borrowing and using our mutual aid more than we ever have. So the next few slides are essentially just a bunch of comparison stuff. Chief, if you want to go to the next one? So this is going to be really tough for you to see, but Westbrookfield is depicted at the top, and it's really hard for you, but our number-one engine right now is, it's 1996, and our number-two engine, of course, being Engine 1, which is down, it's a 93, which gives you the average age of our equipment is 1995. Now, if you go to Brookfield, the average age of their equipment is, I'm going to make it bigger, is 2008, and if you go to North Brookfield, it's 2021, it looks like. In any event, everything is well past the year 2000, and most of our stuff is, is still older, and it's been working well for us for years. We've got our money value out of it, and then some. And people like Jesse Marion, who worked on these trucks for years, took great care of it. Even the mechanics that come in now, they go, wow, who greased all these trucks? And a lot of it is because people like him that did all this work on these trucks for years and helped us out and allowed us to keep the trucks longer and stay in service longer than they should have. Next one. So our goal, as you know, is safety, not only for ourselves, but for you folks in the community, and we have to be able to do our job. And if we don't have the tools and the equipment to do the job, then why are we even here? How do we protect you? How do we, how do we keep your homeowners' insurance to a place where you can afford it? And the only way by doing that is, is being able to maintain the safety in the community. So Engine 1 does have a bunch of issues. As we know, it's got, it's got an engine issue. The brake system is not compliant anymore. It can no longer pass inspection because of the brakes on it. We were told, actually, two years ago, that they would no longer pass it, and he must have forgot about it when we brought it last year, because he did pass it, but he also said, that's it. We can no longer get it inspected. The pump hasn't been tested in years because of the simple fact that we know it's not going to pass anyway. So that Engine 1 has served us well. Next one, please. There's a couple of slides in here where we've mentioned the NFPA, and that's where we get all our standards, our fire protection standards from, and everything that kind of governs what we do in the fire service. So there's a couple of slides in that. I'm not going to get into all that. I don't want to keep you folks here all night, so Chief, if you don't mind, go to the next one. And that's, that's the NFPA standard right there, only one of them out of many. So if anybody looks back through the town reports, all the way, I think I went back as far as 2010, and the Fire Department's been looking, chiefs before me, the three or four chiefs before me, have been looking to replace some of those fire apparatuses because it's just getting aged. It's just at the point where some of it's out of, out of repair, and in 2000, since 2010, we still haven't bought a truck. And it's, it's just at that point now where we can't just keep saying no. We have to get to the point where we need to take care of our community. So yeah, we talked about what's it going to cost to repair that, or what we could do to repair it. We did look into the repairs of it, possibly putting a new engine in it, but then at that point, the mechanics would say, well, yeah, we can put an engine in it, but we're not going to certify it, we're not going to, we're not going to put our name on it. it, but we're not gonna certify. We're not gonna, we're not gonna put our name on it. It's just gonna have an engine in it." And that truck is still thirty-one years old, even though it's got a new power plant. It's got a new engine in it. The chassis is still thirty-one years old. The brakes still don't pass inspection. We can't get it inspected. It's not gonna do us any good. So, we come up with a couple of options. We did look at a bunch of, of used trucks online, and if anybody's ever been to the fire station, then they know that the doors are slightly on the low side because that building was built in nineteen fifty-two, and the doors are nowhere near as tall as the new trucks that are being built. Trucks are being built taller and taller. Just take pickup trucks, for example. They're just much bigger. And the same with truck, commercial trucks in the industry. The trucks are just bigger, and they just don't fit in the building the way that they need to. And yes, you can find some that will fit in the building, but quite honestly, they often don't fit the needs for this community. Every community is different. Every fire truck is different. They get it built to fit the community so they best suit the community. So, what we're looking for is to replace the thousand gallons that we're gonna lose, the truck that we've already got specked out, the fire chief, who used to be the fire chief in Ware, Chris Gagnon works for E-One down, down in North Attleboro or Attleboro, or wherever the heck it is, and he is doing us a favor. We actually priced out a lot of trucks, and there was some stuff that was a hundred thousand and plus more for essentially the same truck that we got priced out today. And he's doing us a favor, helping us out. He's from the community next door, and this is where we've been doing our homework and our research with him, as well as members of the department that have, that have done their due diligence and talking to other vendors, talking to other manufacturers, and seeing what we can get the best bang for our buck. And the best bang for our buck is what we're gonna present to you guys. These here are just some of the options that we've looked at. Some of them just don't fit the building. Some of them are, got way too many hours on them. Some of them got too many miles. This is a lot of used stuff that, that we looked at, and we spent a lot of time looking at used stuff. Next, please. And here's some of the reasons why. Two-person cab, it's too tall. Another two-person cab. The tank's too small, 'cause quite honestly, the whole town doesn't have hydrants. So, outside the hydrant district, we have to bring all our water with us. So, if you live up on Ragged Hill, or if you live way out Wickabock Valley Road, or even down Long Hill, there's no water out there. We're bringing water, so we can't just show up with a standard truck with seven-hundred-and-fifty gallons. We try to bring at least a thousand gallons or more. If you got, if you got two hand lines off a truck, you're good for anywhere from two and a half minutes to five minutes. Then you're out of water. Two and a half minutes to five minutes. That's it. If your mutual aid's not there within that, you're sitting there waiting for mutual aid to show up, because we only got the one truck. Right? Okay, next. So, right now, to buy it outright, it's six-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand. That's to buy the truck outright. If we use a hundred and sixty-two thousand out of the stabilization account, that means we're gonna borrow five-hundred-and-ten thousand. With that five-hundred-and-ten thousand, the average homeowner will pay about forty-four dollars and thirteen cents a year. Okay? Does that answer most questions? On a ten, yes, correct. Thank you. On a ten-year loan. So, once this truck is paid off in ten years, the debt goes away, and the debt exclusion goes away. It goes, the tax, the tax base goes back to whatever, whatever it is. Okay, so it's only a debt exclusion. It's, it's, like I said, once the debt's paid off, the tax rate goes back down. Ten years, forty-four dollars and thirteen cents a year per average household. Forty-four per year, yeah. Any questions?
What was the interest on that?
So, the interest right now, and the interest may change, and we're expecting that it is gonna change, but right now, it's right around six percent. But I think with the election, and when that changes, we're kinda figuring that it's gonna drop. We've kinda gotten word that it's gonna drop, so it might even get better, quite honestly. But this is, we're expecting this to be worst-case scenario. That's what we're expecting. So, unless something goes awry, and who knows what could happen with the federal government, but this is what we're looking at today as far as what we got for numbers, and I got assisted with all this from the town treasurer. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Yes, so, this year, Massachusetts is spending more than two billion dollars feeding, housing, providing medical care to illegal aliens. Is there any chance that anybody can put any pressure on the knuckleheads in Boston to redirect some of the money that they willingly spend on people who aren't even citizens to help us out?
Yeah, so, unfortunately, as a point of interest, that's something that we can't do here tonight. So, unfortunately, that's up to your legislators, the people that you vote for, those are the folks you need to talk to about that stuff. So, okay?
The town, let's, let's make a request while we have to.
Okay. So, so what we can do now is, Mr. Moderator, if you, if we wanna take Article Three?
I was gonna say, let's get back to Article Three, and then we'll get into that more on Article Four.
Okay.
So, again, Article Three is to transfer a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars from the fire apparatus stabilization fund to provide the partial funding for the new engine. This does require a two-thirds vote. The bylaw is clear. A two-third vote requires a secret ballot unless the secret ballot is waived, so I would entertain a motion to waive the secret ballot. Motion's been made in second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. The secret ballot has been waived. Is there any further discussion on this particular article?
Again, David Brown, twenty-seven Rodman. I wanna make it clear, if it's not clear to everybody here, that this is simply to transfer money to an account to be a down payment for this purchase if the next article passes. At this point, we have not voted to spend any money just to set it up so that we can if the next one passes.
Correct. Just to transfer. Any other questions? There being none, all in favor of Article Three, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. There being none, the article passes. Article Four. And this is to purchase a new truck. So, I move that the town appropriate the sum of five-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars. To meet said appropriation, authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow five-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars under Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven and Eight, or any other enabling authority for the purchase of an engine-pumper truck, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept any grants for such project, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept any gifts for such project, and further to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to issue bonds and notes, therefore, provided, however, that this vote shall not take effect until the town votes to exempt from the limitation on total taxes imposed by General Law, Chapter Fifty-nine, Twenty-One C., which is Proposition Two and a Half, amounts required to pay the principal of, of an interest on borrowing authorized by the vote. Now, again, when I say Proposition Two and a Half, what the Fire Department is asking for is a debt exclusion. I've seen some signs, people are putting up again that this is permanent. No, it's not. It's only for the life of the loan. So, when you see two and a half, the debt exclusion is part of that, but it is, this is not an override. This is a debt exclusion. Is there any discussion?
Capital Planning has been charged with looking at priorities for capital projects in town, including fire truck, highway trucks and vehicles, major construction and rebuilding, I'm sorry, building of municipal buildings. We're tasked with looking at the priorities. We're also tasked with looking at how we can be anticipating these needs over a longer period of time, five years and possibly longer. So, we wanna make sure that we can set up priorities that give us predictable and level spending, and we promise to get that back to you probably for annual meeting coming up this spring. What I wanna tell you is, in addition to approval by advisory and by our select board, Capital Planning voted four, four to nothing to prove it. We heartily endorse it, and I hope this is supported here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, David Willner, sixty-seven Burlington Road. I'd like to speak in favor of the borrowing to get a new fire truck. As a homeowner, I'd like to think that the Fire Department, the volunteer, the paid and the volunteers are able to get to my house if there's a fire, and I'd like them to have the equipment and the ability to handle that, so I'm, will be voting in favor.
Thank you, Dave. Is there anyone else? Yes, Pam.
Because you're so beautiful. Oh, you know, and I, I can recognize the need for the fire truck, but I think fiscally and administratively wise for the town, that that money, even the forty-four dollars a year from every household could be put towards, one, maybe getting us a town clerk and paying at a rate that might need to be paid. I mean, I don't know how the town's gonna work that. And also, I know the need for a town administrator, and I guess I'm gonna ask, how do we have a police chief who's also a town administrator? Do we not need one or the other? I just wanna know where, I think that money could be better well-spent into the infrastructure of our town. That's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you, Pam. Is there anyone else? Again, this article is gonna require a two-thirds vote, which, again, it has to be by, by law, a secret ballot unless the secret ballot is waived. Would anyone care to make a motion to waive the secret ballot? Motion was made. Is there a second?
There is a second.
Made and seconded. Secret ballot has been waived. All in favor of Article Four, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Why don't we do a standing? If you stand now, it's a yes vote, please. Yep.
Hi, I just wanted to take this time to ask our legal counsel a question, actually, 'cause he's here. The past couple town meetings and I've been in attendance to, there's been a little confusion with the townspeople comparing the original warrant that was posted to the website and to the outside bulletin board, and then the confusion with the motions that are being read tonight on the floor. I would like maybe someone a little bit more well-versed in this to explain it. I think sometimes the townspeople think that we are trying to pull, you know, like a fast move on them, but the way that I see it is that it's, it can be changed, just like an amendment from any of the townspeople on the floor. The motion can be read differently than the article that was posted on the original warrant, and I just wanted a little clarity about that, 'cause it seems to be brought up at every meeting.
I think, Don, if they waive, if they waive the...
Thank you. In response to the previous question, you do not need an exact mirror image between what's in the warrant or the article that's, the article or the motion that's published in the town meeting warrant. That can change, so long as the entire subject matter doesn't change. The way the law is written, it says that the public must be warned. That, that's the idea of a warrant. It comes from the term "warrant," and so long as the voters are warned about what's gonna be discussed tonight, and by publishing the warrant about this fire truck article, everybody's aware that it's gonna be discussed, and it's acceptable. If it were a totally different topic, that would be different, but if these changes happen, I do a number of town meetings across the state, and this happens all the time, so not to worry, so long as it's within the scope of the article, and you're not totally changing the subject matter, and I don't, I see this to be well within the scope tonight. Hope that helps.
Some people said, if you, if it's a yes, please stand.
Yeah, you did.
Are you voting?
And they're, they're doing the vote now.
Okay, Mr. Moderator?
Yes. Hang on one second. No, not right yet. They can sit down, though. Doesn't matter. We're just gonna, I thought we had done that, but it was brought to my attention that maybe no, or maybe I didn't understand it. We need to redo the vote for the secret ballot. There was a motion. There was a second made. All in favor of suspending the secret ballot, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Now, we're gonna go back to four, and the standing vote for the nays. All those who voted no, please stand. Thank you. The result of the standing count is sixty-six in favor of the article and ten no's, so the article passes. Thank you, Cam. Kami just reminded me, that's gonna appear on the ballot at a later date as well. It has to pass twice. With that being said, I would entertain a motion to dissolve our special town meeting. There's a motion. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. It being eight? Seven, seven fifty-two? This, motion is, the town meeting is dissolved.